It is six o'clock and the call meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five revised order, suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law, DL chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, extending remote participations through January two thirty, two thousand and twenty seven. Members of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote. Agenda items listed to those recently anticipated by the chair, not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CPSB and School Committee Recorder and will be broadcast once transcribed and approved, made public and posted on our website. Okay, we have one number remotely, so we'll take our poll, hold vote. Sarah Conatty.
Here.
Allison Reed. Allison, just unmute yourself.
Here.
Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Andy Potter.
Present.
Bill Vogt.
Here.
Bill Fields.
Here.
Diane Singer.
Here.
Sarah Burla.
Here.
Richard Tahoney.
Here.
And Steve Hammond, present. We have two sets of minutes, we'll do one at a time. First is May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, go have a motion.
So motion will be approved.
Have a motion and go on a second.
Correct.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call Sarah.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I. Next is August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty four, executive session, go have a motion.
Will be approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll call Sarah.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I, unanimous. Right into the superintendent's report. Okay, so I think we'll start with Mirabelle and then then the principals. Welcome, Mirabelle, how's the talent of school going?
It's good, I'm uh, it was a good year, but I'm ready for a change, I think. So, yeah, no, I'm excited, everyone's, everyone's, everyone's doing well.
Lot of changes schools.
No, 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 that would be, I don't think I would be sad about that, actually.
Um, so I got pretty sure this day, all good news, we had our eighth grade orientation yesterday, this is the first year we've ever done like
an orientation day instead of having kids come in during a day, during an occasion if they wanted to. Um, so the current eighth graders are rising freshman class came up too busy yesterday. I'm in, the program was split into two parts, so there was a student panel, I had a student, there was a student teacher panel, I had a student life tours. And it was a really great event, definitely something I wished that I'd had, and I was a freshman, to be able to just make those connections and see the building right up the bat. And then we met, ended with a really nice sort of activity, they've been growing seeds in their science classes, so what they did is they actually took the seeds and they planted them in our front court, in our front courtyard in front of my event, so that way they can see them on their walks up the hill, those first couple weeks of school, which would be nuts. Um, general shout out to Beth Hook, who was the initiator, sort of pulled the whole thing together with uh, the team, so that was great. Something that I hope we continue here, and it went really well. Um, on a similar note, we had Monday night's sports teams down to the middle school yesterday to do recruitment for their upcoming seasons next year. For those of you that don't know, a lot of, well not a lot, a couple of Monday night's sports teams were open to seventh through eighth grade, which is intense as well. Um, I run across country, so I've been able to see sort of firsthand the really positive impact this has had on our school community, those connections, and that involvement is really, really valuable. For not just the middle schoolers that are able to come up and connect with the high schoolers, but the high schoolers that sort of learned how to mentor and work with those middle schoolers. So that was awesome, and we're excited for our upcoming sport seasons. Speaking of sports, we did send ten track, or over ten track and field athletes to the Massachusetts State Divisional Track and Field Championship, where the teams performed really well, and then we ended up sending two of our runners from junior class, so Billy Deslitz and Everett Chico. The All-State Championships, which is the top thirty-two runners for each event in the state of Massachusetts. The team competed really well, and if you haven't heard already, Everett did break the school mile record, which has been standing for fifty-one years. Uh, he ran a mile in four minutes and sixteen seconds, and I heard recently that he's actually been in contact with the guy who used to hold the record, and they've been going back and working on it over email, which I thought was really sweet, so congrats, I'm great.
Yeah, well, Virgil Patten.
Virgil Patten records, too?
Yeah.
Probably a question that.
No, what his school record was Virgil Patten.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, I have mistaken as, well, even bigger for that list. Um, and then, of course, tomorrow's last day of school, we made it, we've had a great last couple weeks, senior prom, senior commencement, we did a field day, which was great. Um, and then I guess this would be just our white challenge, everyone's going a little bit stir crazy, but that's okay, it's part of the process. Um, I also just want to take this moment to congratulate Mr. Barnes, who's the first year's principal.
Thank you.
You really did do an honorable job, because you've done a lot of, yeah, but not only your faculty, but your students too, as well.
Thank you very much.
That's what I got, have a great, right?
Hey, Mirabelle, when you're called. Christopher, give anything to add to Mirabelle's report?
Just a few things, but it's certainly hard to follow Mirabelle. Um, she, Mirabelle obviously mentioned a number of great things which have occurred recently, and she and I had a quick conversation. So some really good news is that Mirabelle has agreed to be a student director of the school committee again next year. And we will be looking for a junior as well. Uh, and I just wanted to mention a couple other things, it was my honor and thrill to attend um, the student, pardon me, my, the senior breakfast, and also to be at commencement at Tanglewood. I think they both went really smoothly, and it's just beautiful, Tanglewood, it just was a place to have, it was thrilling. Uh, we had Junior Awards Night on Tuesday, of course, Mirabelle was there, a big honor. Um, where we honored the accomplishments of our juniors and also welcomed them as the new student leaders at Monty Mountain Regional High School. So that was a fantastic event as well. And I just wanted to say overall, that it's been my honor and privilege to work as a principal at Monty Mountain Regional High School this year. They have an amazing group of faculty and staff, they have fantastic students, and I look forward to a summer full with planning and moving to year two, I noticed. So I have, I know the challenge is the same as Mirabelle, students are getting antsy.
Jake, what do you got?
I'll lock down.
Yeah, come on down.
Because as might be longer, principal colleagues will tell you, mine are always really long, so. I don't know if I can stand that long. Good evening, everybody.
Thanks.
Always a pleasure to be here. Um, just like to start off by thanking our eighth grade team, our eighth grade families, our eighth grade students for a really good three-day trip to Philadelphia last week. Um, kids had a great time, and a lot of people worked really hard to make that happen. They really need to single out Christine McLaughlin, who is a eighth grade science teacher, who, yet the day that I started last year, like July eighth, was in my office with, here's the plans for the Philly trip, which fell a million years away. But Christie did a great job, and so did everybody involved. Um, last night was our first ever Broadway night at Du Bois, featuring the cast of Matilda chorus and about a dozen solo and small ensemble performances by our students. So the students um, did works from some of their favorite Broadway musicals, and it was a really, really fun night. Um, it was organized by Maddie Gaudette, our portal director, and by Sonny, and uh, and then Josh Briggs helped out. Thanks to all of our performers and volunteers and fans, we were in a bit of a pinch as it was getting started because we did not have enough chairs out, which is an awesome problem to have at a school event. And we hope that this becomes a new tradition, it was a, it was a fundraiser, and a lot of people worked really hard to make it possible. We have had some personnel movement in our schools with retirements, life changes and transfers into our neighboring schools. We're really excited to, to say today, thanks to the superintendent, that we have hired everybody that we needed to hire um, for the school year to start, so Peter, thank you for.
Yeah, you did the heavy work.
Well. The money is the heavy work. So, so thank you for that, but we're really excited to welcome um, some new folks and some folks transferring in from other buildings and getting ready to have a, a great year next year. Last Wednesday was our field day, our PTO, our new PTO organized the entire thing, it was a wonderful day. It was the day that our eighth graders left for Philadelphia, so it was just a grade five through seven event. And it was just really a lot of fun, kids had a really good time, someone has got um, well sunburns, which I'm just recovering from. And uh, it was, it was a really nice day, so thanks to all of them. And thank you to our colleagues at both schools, and we had our fourth graders up uh, this week to welcome them and orient them a little bit to the fifth grade at Du Bois. And our eighth graders had a wonderful time uh, up on the Hill Monument, uh, as Mirabelle said, and we're very grateful to Beth for organizing that and to everybody that made those happen. So in terms of challenges, I think back to the first time that I spoke with you all this fall. I think in my first good news and challenges, I expressed some nervousness that my principal gears were rusty. Um, I was one hundred percent correct in that worry and that concern. Um, and primarily for that reason, but for many more reasons, I really need to thank our entire staff at Du Bois, our students, uh, the families that we serve and our entire administrative and central office team, including all of you, for uh, for lots of patience and lots of assistance and lots of question answering. Um, I think it made for a really good year at Du Bois and hopefully a powerful year for the young people who live around us. But uh, I am just, I cannot imagine if I weren't coming back next year, how sad I could be. So grateful for the opportunity.
As would we be. Yes, likewise, very much so.
Very grateful for the opportunity to get to do this again.
Yeah, thank, thank you for what I think everybody would agree has been an extraordinary year. You know, often I talk in wacky metaphors, but to have a steady hand on the tiller in that building is, is really welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain, thank you. All right, Cynthia.
Here I am.
We'll try to top, top both of those.
Watch me. Okay, I'm gonna top them, then I'm just gonna be quick, and then I'll crush you with.
We like quick.
Quickness, okay. Um, it is a very busy time at Luddy Brook School, it's been an excellent time, we had um, the Berkshire Theater Group come and perform, or uh, help put on the fourth grade um, play for both uh, Ms. Cosell and Ms. Manzolini. These are plays that our fourth graders write, and then BTG helps them perform it, it's super cool, that recently happened. Um, we also had Field Day, which was wonderful, put on by our PE teachers, volunteers, staff, it couldn't have gone better. The first grade had a series of plays this week, um, each class put on a play that um, were based on uh, picture books, and they were all um, around the theme of community. It was really heartwarming and wonderful. Sarah joined us for every.
So impressive, great.
They're wonderful, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we also had, our fourth grade had their Regions Fair today, um, which was wonderful, parents came, families came. Tomorrow we have our clapout, where Oath of the Day comes and does a drumming circle with our students, which is really awesome. Um, our fourth grade certificate ceremony is on Monday at nine o'clock. Um, and I did just want to share a little bit of data with you, because we did finish our benchmarking, and um, so our spring data in reading, which are um, we measure book K through four, our students went from forty percent of them being at or above benchmark to fifty-six percent of them being at or above benchmark. Seventeen percent of them were on the watch list, eighteen percent of them are now on the watch list, and forty-three percent of them were below and in need of immediate intervention, and now twenty-six percent of our students are there.
Can I ask about that?
Sure.
Um, what accounts for those relatively low numbers? Is it, English is a second language, is it non-English speaking students that pull the, the reading numbers down? Because they're not, I, I acknowledge they're an improvement.
They're an improvement.
But they're still not.
Um, the bench, right, then, you know, the benchmarks are high, and we have a wide range of students. I would, I certainly wouldn't say that it is because of our ELs, I would just say that reading acquisition is very hard. It's a very hard skill to teach, and over time, our teachers and our students are, are learning the best ways to learn to read. Yeah.
I think fifty-six percent is above the state average.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it is a great improvement.
Yeah, I'm not, I believe, I think it's a great improvement, and we'll see how far it leads with the eventual testing in third and fourth grade. Um, and then, and then hopefully it becomes a trend, right, and over time we continue to see that cross. Uh, yeah, great. Great discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, so I just have one other update to share, and Christopher shared in one of his memos, and you might have seen it. We posted uh, with some support from Berkshire Chaconic Community Foundation, uh, Kim and Rufus Jones. They're the co-directors of the James Wildin Johnson Foundation, and he had, he's a really big deal, writer, poet, attorney, and a whole number of things. Uh, was a contemporary of uh, Du Bois and other people, and quite a significant figure in the Harlem Renaissance. He's probably best well-known for um, um, the song he wrote with his brother, Lift Every Voice and Sing. Uh, and they came and did a completely engaging and brilliant talk. Uh, and Christopher and I and a few other people that were there were really moved by it. Uh, we're gonna have them come back uh, sometime in the fall to, and we don't do this often, but it was so engaging. I'll probably have them talk to the, the whole school. Uh, and, and maybe do another um, um, community thing, but the connections they made and the sort of sense and context, and him as somebody who lived in Great Barrington uh, for a number of years, and is connected to all these other inspirational uh, thought leaders, which was really, it was like totally inspiring, and, and Jill shared the first part, Jill Jones, uh, which was some of the history, and Rufus is uh, also a musician, and, and he shared some of the musical piece, and then to get this really cool uh, medley of like, everybody and their brother uh, singing different parts of the song, so uh, Aretha Franklin and the Mormon, Abernathy Player, and, and then Al, who's the other one? Al Green, Al Green, it was really, it was really neat, so, um, Al, uh, I totally vouch for them, and we'll get them back to do it again for even more people, and uh, and when we do, please, please come. Um, one other thing, it's really a structural thing that, that uh, I may remind at the end of the meeting, I scheduled a, a very brief um, um, uh, school committee, virtual school committee meeting um, for um, next week. Um, uh, and sorry, it's not on, it's not on the list here, but, but please join us for that. I missed something inadvertently, um, and, and I need to ask you to vote on it before the end of the fiscal year. Sixteenth Monday at four thirty. Yeah, sixteenth Monday at four thirty, it'll be virtual, so wherever you are, just, just log in and back, and my apologies in advance, feel free. Um, so the couple things we're gonna talk about, I don't think we have any grant approvals or donations tonight. Uh, I asked JP to come to give a, a little update on out of school time, we'll do the business administrator, uh, provides job description, and Donna Dinesco is waiting in the wings, and I'll promote her in a sec, so she can give us a little update preview of where we are uh, with the building project, which sets up the um, the
To the funeral.
Yeah, the community meeting uh, and tours on, on Monday afternoon, tours at five fifteen, and the actual meeting um, at six. So, um, JP sent around a memo, uh, he can sort of go over it quickly, and then, and then we can respond to questions that have gone.
Um, so after um, our meeting in April, I took your marching orders and looked at the program, tried to figure out um, how we can keep it alive, um, and hopefully, Rich, um, sort of went back to square one, in a lot of places, made no assumptions. Um, we did another parent survey, just to make sure parent priorities hadn't changed since our last survey. Um, and um, and have come up with the, the proposal that you have in your packet. Um, our goal was to um, keep as much of the good stuff as possible, um, but also to be a, a bit more efficient with how we spend money. Um, some of the, the, the big changes I summarized on that first. Um, uh, the biggest impact is going to be a focus on first through sixth grade. Um, as uh, Mirabelle mentioned earlier, seventh and eighth graders have the opportunity to participate in a lot of high school activities. We're not abandoning our seventh and eighth graders, but our focus is going to be on first through sixth. Um, and um, I expect that Jake and I will continue to look at the middle school and make sure that our seventh and eighth graders' needs are being met. Certainly a program like Three Nagers that's targeted towards middle schoolers will always be part of our programming, and will certainly include seventh and eighth graders, so I want to make it clear that we're not abandoning those seventh and eighth graders, but our focus is, is first through sixth. Um, we are going to be expanding our days significantly, um, we will be starting um, right after Labor Day, um, and going until the end of the school year. Um, one of the main reasons we couldn't start in the fall until later in the fall was because we were waiting for our funding. So this is one of those times where stepping away from the twenty-first century actually is going to us. Um, that was a big issue that a lot of parents had mentioned.
There was a lot of plans to go there. Yeah. Now people, it was a, this was.
Yeah, it's definitely a challenging time, you know, you don't want to come up with seventeen different plans for what your kid is going to do after school. It's, it's nice to have something in place that starts the first day, and then it's the last day. Um, so with a couple of little exceptions, um, that's what, that's what we'll be offering, we'll be doing that in four sessions that are roughly ten weeks each. Um, with no break in between, which was another frustration for parents of the past. Um, we'll also be going to single day enrollment, um, which was again, another twenty-first century requirement that a lot of people had trouble with. If you want to sign up for just Mondays, sign up for just Mondays. If you want to sign up for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but not Thursday, go for it. Um, you know, again, we're really trying to be as flexible as we can. Um, we're also going to be taking over the um, early morning drop-off program. Um, uh, taking that off of, of Cynthia's plate. Um, and hopefully keeping it um, uh, robust and well-structured, um, so that it's not, yeah, so that it's chaotic, so it's not so chaotic, and we know exactly where everybody is and what they're doing. Um, so, so we'll be taking that over, so, um, uh, the overall budget has gone down substantially, but the, the number that I think I really want to draw attention to is the cost per student per hour, um, which has dropped from seventy dollars per hour, uh, per student to um, uh, twelve, uh, twelve seventy-two. Um, so again, we are working a lot more efficiently this way. Um, and for the record, we are running about twenty-five percent more days than we have in the past. Um, so we're pretty optimistic that this is a structure that is going to serve our community. Um, we recognize that this will be a live animal, um, and we will need to, you know, make some adjustments as the year progresses. Um, but my team is very excited about this plan, um, and we're optimistic. Um, is there anything that alarmed anybody or any questions you have for clarification?
Uh, I think one thing while you're sort of thinking about those, a shift we're making is this, this uh, fee for certain, for, for some folks.
Yeah.
Uh, and that, that is good, because some of the criteria type that the grant has prioritized particular subgroups of kids, which inadvertently or really intentionally, from the grant's perspective, has excluded some kids.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and now we'll be able to hopefully accommodate anyone who, who's interested. Um, uh, and if they're eligible for free and reduced lunch, the, the cost will be covered, and if they're not, then, then they can choose to, to pay for, for that service.
Sorry, I didn't mean to overlook that, yeah, that's your reader. Uh, and we did include um, a question on the, the survey in April about willingness, um, and overwhelmingly parents were, in many cases enthusiastic to pay. Um, there were, I think, um, maybe two or three that said I won't participate, if I have to pay.
Okay, so if you can go to the funding, so it's a total of two seventy, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Yes.
Just the uh, abbreviation, so it's forty thousand dollars from E U W, what is that?
Berkshire United Way, sorry.
Berkshire United Way, okay. And then the state, the S O B C.
That's a, that's a state grant that we have applied for and gotten each year, it went down quite a bit from last year to this year, um, and so the budget is, um, assuming it's going to be flat to what we got this year with the rate increases. That is what's in the state budget.
In the budget, the United Way, that's a specific grant just for this program, is that?
Uh, yes, the Berkshire United Way.
And then the MCC?
Uh, that's the Mass Cultural Council, that's a, um, that's a drama grant, um, that we got last year to fund our drama program. And, and we have applied for it again, um, it's almost the exact same grant, I'm hopeful.
Three oh eight, and then the Title One is?
Um, Title One is the district's Title One, um, funding.
Right, so that's, is that extra that we get for this program, or is that, that we're using other district funds to, to fund these? It's, it's, it's so far that we get from the feds, the total allocation in crack down the share is about, it was about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we get. So, so we're, we're investing a hundred and fifty anticipating that even if there were reductions in the Title One amount, it's unclear what's going to happen. That, that we, we're, we're very, very conservative around that. So the Title One, one money that we got last fiscal year, or was it roughly the two hundred and fifty, sixty?
Two sixty-one.
Was any of that used for?
About the same amount.
About the same amount, okay.
That's, that's what I used as the baseline.
But that, that funds could be used for other resources in the district, or?
Well, it's for um, our high-needs, low-income.
Right, but, but, you know, I mean, could it be used to hire teachers, or expect teachers, or parents, or?
It could be used for parents.
Okay.
We tend not to put teachers in our grants, because, in our federal grants, because then you have to put a nine percent um, allocation to MTLS.
Okay, but so if it could be used for parents.
Yes.
In the, in the district, or other needs that, like, during school day, needs could be used to fund those projects, correctly, that under, okay. And then the deficit, obviously, the forty-nine thousand, seven seventy-two is going to be coming from the district?
No, that's coming from the parents, but that's how I calculated the, the parent uh, rate. So I, I, I made the assumption that about forty of our parents would be, would be paying um, the day rate, and so I took that number, divided it by the number of hours and the number of expected enrollment, and that came up with a nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
Okay.
So if I change that deficit number, that nine twenty-two will change.
Okay, uh, yeah, one other question, just uh, as far as, I mean, I like to drop early morning, but I'm concerned about the actual drop-off, um, I know the middle school has dropped off there, that intersection's a lot better now, that the um, it's been paved, but still is, is hairy, there's a lot of high school stuff, siblings off, and when you add any traffic into the, uh, this is firsthand, now, because I had a middle school, into the elementary school, before, the, I was at eight fifty, um, it can get more dangerous, so I, I worry about people going, and that's the reason why things are staggering, I think it works out well now. It worked out really well when it was a hard eight o'clock on drop-off, like the middle school, I've seen this year graduate people getting sooner and sooner, and it's uh, it's gotten some more dangerous situations, so I am worried as far as entering in front of the school uh, for a drop-off, maybe if they could drop them off, um, with the high school kids, skip off to the back of the school, something that might be less dangerous, of, because that intersection, we're going left, going right. Um, some of the high school kids again are, are making a hurry to get to, to their school. Um, so I worry about adding another layer of traffic uh, going in a fourth direction at that time of day, just from, you know, say, seven thirty to seven fifty, um, would be my only concern.
So, so to be clear, we're not adding another layer of traffic, we are reorganizing. Um, there is already an early drop-off program.
Yep.
Um whereby kids get dropped at the front of the building and go into the gymnasium.
Okay.
Um and that program was originally for um members of the school community who have kids in the at the school.
Yeah.
Um and it has sort of grown.
Right.
As as people have developed to need.
Yeah.
So um that's why Cynthia and I wanted to actually take a look at it and avoid exactly what you're talking about, how can we restructure this so that it meets our community need and keeps kids safe and doesn't add chaos to our mornings. So that is one of the things that we're talking about. Um relocating it possibly to the cafeteria, which is at the that sort of basement level. And having parents drop the kids off at that back cafeteria door so that they're not going up to the main entrance. Um again, that's one possibility we have not determined yet.
So you're saying that, because it was always my understanding that the early morning drop off started at eight, you're saying that's gotten moved earlier now? I I have kids.
Cynthia, do you want to speak?
Uh if so, for staff, um students for staff who had students in our buildings, they were allowed to be dropped off at seven thirty five.
Okay.
And then at eight o'clock.
Right, eight o'clock.
Anybody could drop their students off.
Yeah.
As long as they had signed up.
Right.
And then at the very end of the year, I clarified that if students weren't in our building by eight twenty, they had to hold them until eight thirty five.
Yeah, no, it's just that before eight, it's that seven thirty to seven fifty range.
That those are those are staff.
Staff.
Children only, and I would imagine that that will still be the case.
Yes, yeah, well, because right now, I mean, this proposal is having starting about seven thirty to eight thirty five or?
Seven thirty five, that's what my staff.
And that's my concern is that that's seven thirty five to seven fifty, right? So I mean, we'll see how it works out, but I just, I I noticed firsthand that it's not uh it it's better, but it's uh can be a little hairy at that intersection, especially, you know, seems to be at the end of the day. People are, everyone's gotta get to work themselves, all the parents dropping off, kids have gotta get to school, it seems a lot more um hairy than the end of the day, when people are done for, you know, more relaxed, but that would be my only concern.
Yeah, and 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 actually, our our hope is that by formalizing the structure um that we will get a little bit better control over it. Um you know, we wanna make it clear to folks, this is not a as needed drop off. Um you need to be enrolled in this program, you need to walk your kid to the door, you know, you know. Um so we're hoping to bring some structure to something that is currently um something that has gotten a little out of hand.
Great, thank you. Can I ask a question?
Please.
The Title One of Grant, the federal name?
Yes.
Is that at risk because of what's going on in Washington?
It it's really hard to say, I I I think it's a a couple of months ago, I would have told you categorically no, but it seems like there are no sacred cows in Washington right now. Um uh so many districts and communities all over the country are really dependent on this, I think it would be a hard one to eliminate because no matter what your political stripe is, it will impact you, so. Um um but but there are there are other sacred things that are being eliminated, right? So we're um we're we're being very conservative.
So if it does get eliminated, that blows a hole in the budget, what, how do we? Does the the district pick up the slack um kind of operating?
No, no, uh they don't have that kind of money.
Yeah.
If if, as I mentioned, this is a a live animal. Um we would need to react um in the moment if 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 any one of these grants, for some reason, didn't happen. Um we would need to make some hard decisions then and there about the size of the program, about the cost of the program. Um and that is something we're prepared to do. Um you know, we don't wanna make promises we can't keep, of course. But we also need to respond to changes in the moment. Um also, I mean, I I my understanding is that the Title One for the coming year is part of the twenty twenty five budget, is that is that not correct?
Uh I I I think we're likely strong for next year.
Yeah.
But but again, like there there are no rules these days, right? And it's hard to to anticipate. There there are some other contingencies and I'm not ready to share those right now that aren't connected to our our general operating budget, but if this went south, then look, we're always planning, right? That there are always other opportunities and 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 then we get to the problem of like if if some of those other resources were become available, then I have to come back to you and we have to prioritize this, right? So the federal funds this year got cut, but we have some money, but what are our priorities for that money? And how might we, how might we use it, so?
So is this, the Title One, is that flows to the state or not?
It it.
Does it what?
It flows to the state, right?
Yeah.
So.
Sorry. Uh and I, of course, um am on a number of um uh a actual one out of school time list serves and mailing lists and organizations and so forth. And I'm constantly keeping an eye out for grants. Um so obviously, I'm I'm constantly looking for that. Also, this year, we anticipate um that we're probably gonna wanna do some fundraising as well. Um so I'm hoping that, you know, this first year, we can sort of find our legs um as as a as an income, um as well as not just a, not just a a cost payable, so.
I have a question about the income from the 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 day rate. How is that gonna be book sharing, like setting up a separate fund for that or where where's that?
Yeah, we would have to look at a probably a new revolving.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, okay.
Kinda like a, like a user fee for the high school.
That.
Well, like a, like a another tuition revolving fund or the after school program, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
No, sorry.
Uh staffing, elimination of positions?
Yes.
And then the proposed staffing, I don't quite get it, I how do you?
Um so um the 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 net elimination of staff positions was um was two because we um we eliminated the middle school psych coordinator and the middle school being teacher. Um we did keep the elementary school psych coordinator. Um created a position of elementary school assistant manager. Um we created a middle school assistant manager, but it's only five hours a week. That's basically somebody who's going to be with the kids for that um that lot of time when they're transitioning. Um so uh and also my own position, we um we eliminated and then created a program coordinator position that's twenty four hours a week. Um so yes, we kept some, we eliminated some, we renamed some. Um uh but this was starting from zero. We didn't say, okay, who are we gonna keep and who are we going to get rid of? We started with what do we need in place in order to run this program?
I I see that.
Um do you anticipate updating the programming now that you're free from the constraints of the twenty first century learning grant?
Uh.
Are you changing the programming goal?
Uh uh constantly.
Okay.
Um.
Could you give us maybe, especially with focus on on the primary grades for three, six?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of what the most successful programs are or what you?
Um our number one rule of thumb is are the kids engaged? Um um and engaged in a developmentally appropriate way. So we're constantly trying new things because kids change and and kids are different. So um you know, a Lego program that was outstandingly popular one one term, all of a sudden, nobody signs up for the next turn, so it is sort of a constant whack a mole. Um I am gonna be meeting with Cynthia and Betsy next week to talk about some of the goals that are happening in the school to make sure that we're supporting them as well. But it it is, it is kind of a moving target, we're, you know, we are trying to keep kids engaged. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Do you want like a real level of specificity, like?
I mean, I just.
If I'm a second grader, what classes could I sign up for?
I mean, I I'm definitely familiar with the what Cleo's done in the past. I'm just wondering, understanding how strict the requirements for the twentieth century learning um of funding were. I think what they had a focus on staff and they, you know, certainly kind of targeted things that you had to check off.
Right.
That seemed to tick those boxes, but weren't necessarily what
Right, so so I can give you an example, um because in the survey that I mentioned in in April that I took earlier in the year, overwhelmingly, one of the things parents said they wanted their kids was an opportunity to socialize.
Uh-huh.
Um with peers. Um in the spring, we actually created a Lego club. Um that because we were lucky enough to have somebody donate like an enormous collection of Legos. Um.
You lost more?
Yeah. Um and um all that that group does is build whatever they want.
Uh-huh.
Uh you know, sometimes the instructor is like, hey, let's try building the tallest tower, let's try. But they have a handful of those that they need to throw out there when nothing's happening.
Uh-huh.
But for the most part, the kids just sit and talk and play with Legos.
Uh-huh.
And it's actually kind of gorgeous. I mean, it's, I mean, it's really wonderful to to go and observe. So that's an example of a program that under twenty first century, they would have been like, well, where are your learning outcomes? And how are we, what's math standards are we hitting?
Uh-huh.
And how are we shoehorning um you know uh numeracy into this? And are the kids measuring and keeping track of it? And it's like, let them play. Um so that's definitely more of our focus going into next year is.
Oh, that's great.
We want kids to play.
Uh-huh.
Um because play is learning.
Uh-huh.
Um and it's the best part of it, so um philosophically, that's where we're going.
Okay.
Um one of the things that I am telling teachers as they are planning is please remember to bring the fun. Um but bring the fun that is your fun. Um if the teacher in the room is not having fun with this, then the kids aren't gonna have fun with it. Um and and that's something that's sort of counterintuitive to a lot of what we've been taught in, you know, in a in a time of learning standards and accountability. So I'm I'm telling some of our teachers, take off your your learning standards hat and send it over there and put on your fun hat and um and that's really where we're headed. So what programs are coming up? I don't know, a lot of it depends on who signs up and um and what staff I get and what they wanna do.
Okay.
Um you know, some of our best programs have come from somebody saying, hey, um I wanna try this, and we try it.
Uh-huh.
You know, sometimes things work and sometimes they don't.
Okay, thank you.
I I I I I hope I answered your question.
You did, thank you very much.
Yeah, um I have a couple of questions, please.
Sure.
Once this is all finalized, I think it would be really helpful to have an email go out to the parents sooner rather than later. So they're prepared for the.
Absolutely.
So everybody understands the changes.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, my next step after this is to is to rewrite the 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 current website. Rewrite the current handbook um before the end, so my current contract ends at the end of June. Um and um with this new plan, I will be starting, I have to start this full year. So I've got until the end of June to get all this pushed out.
Okay, great.
Uh so that's my plan.
Great, and then I see the schedules a a little bit different from the way it's been. I'm just curious, the four to five, that's when the actual class happens, so does it?
Yes.
There's, is there gonna be two different classes per global grade level?
Yes. Um so 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 each day, yes, so each day, first and second grade will have course A, course B. Um third to fourth grade is course C, course D, fifth and sixth grade, course E, course F. This is a framework again, sometimes we've had courses that are all grades. Um sometimes we have different mixes, but we will be running, according to the schedule, six courses a day that are discreet, one day courses. Um so if a teacher wants to build a course and they wanna teach it on Mondays and Wednesdays, they should build it in a way that if a kid wants to sign up for it twice, they can experience it twice. Um but they don't have to be there on Monday in order to participate on Wednesday.
Absolutely.
Um which, again, when you're focusing on play, that's great. Um you know, because, oh, well, I built the tower on Monday, I don't wanna build the build the Lego tower on Wednesday, you know, it's um it's that, so that's sort of, you know, the the discussion.
And then do you have a sense of how the kids will be chosen this time?
First, our hope is that everybody who signs up will be able to participate.
Okay.
Um then obviously, there is a maximum number of bodies we can manage.
Uh-huh.
Um but uh the worst case scenario I see is that everybody gets some of what they want. So maybe a kid signed up for four days and they only got enrolled in two or three. Um somebody who signs up for one day is gonna get that one day. Um somebody who signed up for two days is hopefully gonna get those two days. Um somebody who signs up for all four might not get all four days. Um but our goal is that nobody has turned their way for a day, so.
Uh and we we think we're trying to build in flexibility, so if a larger number of fourth graders wanna do something and a smaller number of second graders, we could sort of move sections.
Yeah.
As as needed, or or I I don't know that we would wanna put first and fourth graders together, but that we might put third or fourth graders or first and second.
But uh but uh but a a first, second grade course might become a second, third grade, fourth course.
Uh-huh.
Um and then we, you know, um mix kids that way.
Great, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh so just before, and lacking up to you, the principals, we were running through all the principals and congratulating them on their great first years. And I got caught up in Bill's question about the benchmark testing and inadvertently didn't celebrate him. You get more duration. Sometimes I get distracted if people throw wrong things at me, but it was my intent, and I got lost in the shuffle, so my apologies. Um um so the the next thing on the agenda, and Donna, hang in there, you're you're next after this one. Um is um revised job description for the business administrator. Uh occasionally, we rewrite job descriptions, right? And and we're rewriting this one in the context of Sharon's announced um uh retirement. And when we looked at it, and this is is wild and bizarre, the last time we revised this was um eighteen years ago. Like almost to the to the day, which is like roughly Sharon's tenure uh with the district. So um while we're congratulating people and we'll celebrate Sharon later, but uh like an eighteen year run in the district is a really good run, so thank you, Sharon, for for your eighteen years here. Take a look at this, hopefully you looked at it, uh things are crossed out, which which used to be there. Things in red uh are are new. Uh this is a whole giant section that's new because this hadn't been done in so long. Uh it sort of, it was it was time to to think of it. It doesn't possibly capture all the things that Sharon or somebody in the whole does, but it's trying to organize many of the things that the the person does. And and as we start a search process, and it's all another conversation. Uh we may revisit this with the the candidate um that that ultimately you you select for the for the role. But I think this is a good uh a good saying for a shot, and I'm willing to entertain uh any questions or things, either uh why did you change it or what's missing or or anything, anything like that.
I I guess my question would be, and I think I know the answer, but there's nothing in here that Sharon's not currently doing. I think there's things that Sharon's currently doing that that are not in here, but like you didn't add in anything new to this position that Sharon's not already doing. I don't think that's the case, I just wanna confirm.
No, no, I mean, there there there's one, right? So for part of Sharon's tenure, she directly supervised technology, the last few years I did. I'm trying to hand it back to the next person in the role, uh I think that's the only one.
Food food service, are you currently?
Well, I oversee Cali.
Yeah, and you're removing that or is?
No, it's. No, you know, some of the cross outs are because he moved up in the, if you look up in it, it's in the, it's in the. No, you know, some of the crossouts, because he moved it up in the, if you look up, it's in the, it's in the, a lot of the new stuff is added in the red here.
Okay.
Some of it appeared below, so we just crossed it out.
You know, the risk of long laundry lists of things that you will, that your successor will be doing, or should be doing, runs the risk of leaving something out. But the important thing is that last point.
Or is?
Superintendent will assign as necessary additional tasks. That's, that covers the.
The catchall.
Right.
Yeah.
So, you know, trying to list everything, um, I wonder is maybe, um, maybe hard for not to, actually, um, because it, it risks leaving things out. And while you're, while that last, uh, item of the superintendent assigning, uh, things, uh, according to need captures things, it still, um, uh, brings us a question about the length and, and complexity of all the other.
Yeah, I would, I would actually, I would counterpoint that. Uh, in public service, uh, and, and in, you know, in my experience of public service, you wanna have, for transparency purposes, um, you wanna have a, a comprehensive position statement and, um, a description, job description. Uh, so I think, I mean, while that might be, um, you know, something that you might see in, in, in the private sector, I think in public service, I think it's an important element.
And why?
Because it's not, it's, it, it's looked at two ways. It's also the public is looking to see who should be doing things. You know?
It's a, it, it's a transparency issue.
Yeah.
Basically, you want, like, for instance, you know what I mean? In the town of West Bakers, our police chief has a comprehensive position description. Our, um, our, uh, uh, zoning enforcement officer has a position description that has actually been in the public eye recently.
Yeah.
And, and, and something of a bone of intention. So, I think it's important that in a, in a public service position, that, that, um, that it is a very comprehensive description.
And I would also want the applicant, that superintendent really know what they're getting into it, and not say after we've hired them, well, you didn't tell me, I had to do all those things.
They are right here.
That, that's another.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, you, you may have seen, we, we posted the position, uh, with sort of a simple summary, right? And I think this is really important for, for the candidates to know what, really, to know what they're getting at. You kind of don't want to have positions be malleable. I mean, that is, be malleable, be like clay. You know what I mean? And, and, you know, the more abstract and broad you make it without being specific, all of a sudden, you are basically putting clay on a wheel and, and pulling a pot. And, believe me, you don't wanna see the pots I pull. Um, but, but at the same time, look, I think this is a starting point, and, and then we'll see what, uh, hopefully they can have all these qualifications, but we'll also see what, what strengths they have. And we make adjustments around, uh, um, uh, both strengths and areas for growth. Uh, I don't wanna be supervising food service, right? It's gonna be a given, supervise food service, but.
I, I think it's important, this, Sharon, you might be the fourth business administrator since I've been here. And there's been someone's strengths and weaknesses, there's been at least one who had been a strength, because they, they just went, they, they were hired, there weren't many candidates.
Right.
And, and they weren't. And, and the worst thing we wanna have happen is Peter assume this role because someone else can't do it.
So, i- if you're okay with it, that, that would make me happy, uh, if, if you have additional suggestions. Can I ask a process question? Who does the hiring? So, so this is interesting, and, and we need to talk about this, so there's a little bit of time, but the, the hire of the business administrator, the superintendent, and the director of student services or special director, are, are all hires at, at the school committee level. My recommendation to the school committee, and I'm sorry, I don't have it all written down, so I've spent a lot of time thinking about it, uh, is that, uh, that, uh, we, we form a committee uh, of at, at least three school committee members, uh, uh, potentially the chair, potentially the chair of the, of the finance committee, and then one other person, uh, with input from, um, me, Steve Soul, uh, Kate in the role of, of director of student services, and one of the principals. We sort of all told Jake to do it because he had worked as a, a superintendent and worked with. Did he get up? No, even more than recently, tell I've been doing. And, and he, he'd worked with several business administrators. Um, and, um, a- a- and that's what I was thinking. It, it's posted. Uh, it's open for a decent amount of time, and it's also listed as, as a, 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 open to build. Uh, we anticipate that there'll be some overlap with Sharon, and that's intentional, and whichever candidate.
That's great. I think we share as much as we can.
Uh, whichever candidate we select, um, they also may have some obligation in their current district, if they're coming out of a district, or if not a district, in a college or a, uh, some other setting, uh, to, to give notice. And, and it's quite a significant role in our district, so, um, it, it, it's important to give that person the opportunity to, to wrap up wherever they're transitioning from. Uh, so, so that's what I proposed. We, we can talk about it some more. We have a little bit of, of, um, uh, time while qualifications are starting to, to come in, uh, and then we might start scheduling things um, in, for, for maybe July, for at least a first round of interviews. So do you have a motion to accept this provided job description?
I think it's a motion to approve the description.
I have a motion, second. Any other discussions? Say, non, roll call Sarah.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. And, Steve, I just wanna make one point. No one picked up on the fact that Potter made a ceramics metaphor?
Yeah.
It's, you're, you're a nuanced person.
I do.
Um, okay, so what I've done now is, is I've promoted, um, both Donna and Jim's show, or Donna, you obviously know from, and let me.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm not, it, it's Donna, it's not Jim. Let me see if I, I, it just always likes Jim better than me. I don't know why.
So, so I asked Donna to come and give an MSBA update rather than, uh, Jason or I doing it. Uh, we, we're at this, like, really incredible turning point, and she's gonna share some information to give you the real buildup uh, that, that is, is amazing. Um, a- a- and I won't talk too much about it, but, uh, some really good information we're gonna hear today. And again, that sets up this, this important community meeting on Monday at five fifteen for tours of the school and, and six just in general. But, but Donna, I'll, I'll just hand it over to you. You should be able to present slides if you wanna do slides. Um, and, and go ahead and share the good news. It's exciting.
Sounds great. Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Peter, I, may I, um, have the ability to share for some reason? The host isn't sharing at a webinar.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Try now.
Yay. It's so much better. You don't wanna just hear me, I promise. Um, so, good evening, everyone, and, uh, Jim Shutterworth is with me. I didn't know Jim was here. It wasn't do, it wasn't doubles, you know, it's in doubles. Um, but, uh, we, as, as Peter said, we're really excited where we are with the project. We are culminating the end of the schematic design phase. And it's funny, as I'm, I'm typically in the room with you, but as I'm looking at you all uh, from, from virtually, and I'm seeing the owl go around the room, all of those, uh, you know, renderings and everything that are surrounding you, uh, that just shows a level of effort that has been done from, we probably started this process. We did feasibility study, we selected option three E, which is the school within the hill. That kind of, uh, concluded at the end of last year, twenty twenty four, so starting in January of twenty five, we've really been working hard with some amazing people. I wanna thank everyone that has participated, your subcommittees, uh, school building committee, of course, and, and the superintendent, and the, all of the staff that have participated. But, um, so we're just gonna take you through, we're submitting the, uh, the schematic design to the MSBA June twenty sixth. So, we will be having two more school building committee meetings before we submit it, but we wanted to at least have an opportunity to share with you all where we are, where we landed, and as Peter said, some great news. So, a lot of things haven't really changed. We've just had a lot more detail applied to everything that we've been talking about. And this is the proposed site plan, and nothing really has changed at all. Uh, just to reiterate, the dash line, um, is where the existing school is. The new school is going to be built into the hill to the west or in front of it, facing Stockbridge Road. What you'll see is there's a bunch of red dots at the bottom where the existing practice field is. We are very excited to say that ground source heat pump or geothermal wells are gonna be included as part of the project. And after we did the test well, we, it was determined that the quality of the soils and the conductivity only, only requires a hundred and ten wells, not a hundred and sixteen that we originally had thought. One as well as drilled, so we have a hundred and nine to go. So, as part of the project. Um, we have spent, yeah.
One thing for people who may not have context now, is the wells are drilled, but after the wells are drilled, soil goes back on and, and we can use that field again.
Yes, sorry, thank you. And, and here it is with the, with the, uh, practice field area that will be then covered and, uh, replaced with grass. We have, uh, gone through a series of options and considerations for onsite traffic circulation. And we're really excited that we've been able to arrive at two completely separate, independent um, accesses. The blue is for parent drop off and folks going to the parking lot, as well as the magenta is for, uh, vans that may require students to have additional time for loading and unloading. What you're seeing in the yellow is for the bus drop off loop. And so they would be coming off Monument Ma, Monument Valley Road. And so we really feel that this will be, uh, very helpful with the interior circulation that constantly gets backed up trying to get out of Stockbridge Road. Another point is that we continue to have conversations with Mass DOT. And we think those are going in a positive direction, so we are going to hang loose a little bit, uh, as, as we enter design development after we receive the vote, because we're really hopeful that we'll be able to have the traffic circles, um, in, included as part of the project, or in, in parallel of the project. Uh, we have full access around the building for our emergency and first responders, as well as two accesses in and out again for emergency responders. And this is a little prettier, and, and a little more apropos to tonight's conversations. Here is a nice rendering where the existing school currently is. Once that's demolished, you'll have a new practice field, about the same size as what you currently have, maybe a little bit larger. And we will have, you'll see some outdoor classrooms or passive areas for students and staff to gather. We're really taking advantage of your beautiful site. We have, you'll see the school entrances located, that will be sort of on the opposite side of the Stockbridge Road. I don't wanna say the backside because it's a beautiful front. Uh, but it won't be facing the Stockbridge Road. And then we also have created an arts courtyard at one area where the classrooms can open up into the courtyard. We also have some flexible seating areas that are gonna be a grade of the ground level of the school. Outdoor cafeteria seating, as well as some other flexible classroom spaces along the uh, science labs on the first floor. Nothing has really changed internally, just you'll see, we've started to actually populate furniture to give you an idea, a sense of scale and activities that occur in the spaces. Again, if we, I'll go through this really quickly. The administration, which is in green, is in the upper left corner of the floor plan. They will have oversight of vehicles coming up the main driveway and everyone being dropped off at the front driveway. We have the auditorium and gymnasium on the first floor. We have two entrances, the main entrance to support the auditorium with a very nice large lobby area that can, um, act as a reception area for the auditorium. And we have a second access off by the red is our, all of our PE programs, the gym and PE alternative spaces that have direct access to the practice field and the fields beyond. So really great connections to the out, outdoors. Um, as I stay on the, on the PE spaces, we also have the automotive shop right here that will have direct access for the public facing needs of the program, so community members can park their cars right here, or bring them right into the shop. And then we're really excited about the electricity program, the new CVT or Chapter Seventy Four program that we're expecting to start once the new school is complete. Um, if I go back to the main administration, we have, what's in purple are the core academic programs. Dark purple are special education programs. And then we actually have a business classroom also located, so within the core academic spaces. And our goal was really to integrate special education and the career tech programs so that they are seen and heard and feel a part of this amazing program that you have. If we go upstairs to the second floor, which is the third floor, uh, we have ground floor, first floor, second floor, but you all can decide what you wanna call it when we're all done here. But on, on the upper floor from the main floor, you'll see a lot of purple, uh, some dark purple, so great integration of core academic and special education programs. We have the MMTV program, right? Um, it kind of core and central with the library or media center. And they'll have direct access to the control room of the auditorium. If we go down one floor from the main level, you'll see that what we have here is the main feature, and on this floor is the cafeteria, which is gonna have amazing views, and will open up onto Monument, um, Mon, Stockbridge Road with great views to Monument Mountain. Outdoor seating for that. Um, to the left of that, we have the art programs, as well as the advanced manufacturing and computer science programs, where there's some great synergy that occurs now, and we feel this would really enhance it. We have the early childhood program also located here. And this is intentionally put on the, on the ground floor level because we have, we can have a private dedicated parent drop off, and they can walk directly into the program without having to bring their children throughout the entire school to access the program. They'll also have a private fenced in play area. Uh, on the opposite side of the cafeteria, we are rounding off our science labs. We have five science labs and the horticulture lab. Three of them are located on this floor. Three are on the upstairs, and they would, um, have this nice synergy with the stair right here. And then you'll see, we have this, a great, um, greenhouse that will, the students will be able to go directly out of their, their lab and directly into the greenhouse. So this is probably what we're saying is really exciting. So if you look behind you or, or on the walls, you'll see this really has been, uh, an evolution over the last six months. And we're really pleased how this really came out. Uh, this is a view looking at the main entry. So Monument Mountain's behind the school, and here's the main entry. And you'll see this is a beautiful uh, drop off area that will be, have, have options and ample shading with trees and parking as well. Here, this is a crosswalk from the parking area that will, um, remain as is. And I think, actually, I just wanna also point out, what you're looking at is these are the chorus and band classrooms here, and they're gonna be one and a half stories, so we're gonna have beautiful natural light and high ceilings for those spaces. This long bay of windows here is the PE alternative space, and then you'll see the automotive program at the end of the building. Here's a view looking back from from, I guess we're looking southeast. And this is an interest interesting view because we really haven't spent a whole lot of time studying this area, but as you can see, this is the hill that the buses will be coming up and they'll be using this bus drop off loop and then circling back down. You see that our goal is to maintain as many of the Fox Farm or agriculture buildings at the bottom of the hill. And this is just a really neat way of looking at the automotive program at this end of the of the school and you can start seeing how the greenhouse starts to take shape behind it. Here's a nice rendering of the main entrance. I do want to point out that we have not selected the final colors of the exterior. We heard that they wanted to be earthy and warm. And so these are just some representative images of patterns of brick and things, but we'll be spending a lot of time picking the exact colors that we that you all would like to see on the school once we get into design development. What's also probably missing here almost intentionally, so we didn't want to block the view, is that we will have a series of bollards along here to also protect the pedestrians and people gathering outside of the school. Here's a view as you're kind of at at the end. This is the corner of the art classrooms here. You can see this is the art courtyard that we're starting to create and develop. We have a car down here. This is for the parents dropping off their children to go to the early childhood program with their playground behind that. This is a view coming up the bus drop off off of Monument Valley Road. We have created a path, a pedestrian path that will be fully accessible as well. We felt that was a really important component to incorporate. As we start walking up that hill, you'll start seeing how the facade, we call it the west facade, has really, really taken shape. We have some other images that we'll show you. This is the all glass area is the cafeteria. It's a double height cafeteria and you'll see the beautiful glass and above that is the media center. Oh, sorry, went the wrong way. And here you go. So this is a view as you would be walking up that path or as students are out here really enjoying the beautiful outdoors, whether it's for outdoor learning or dining. It's it's just going to be spectacular. And here's another view if we were on top of Monument Mountain. Now we'd like to take you inside. This is a view looking at the main entrance. It's a double vestibule and so people it's going to be secured. People have to be buzzed in to get into the vestibule. And then once their credentials are checked, they would either be buzzed into the main administration right here or they would be allowed to come in through this locked double doors. What you're looking at on the left is the career center and guidance suite. And you'll see a lot of blank walls and and those are actually intentionally left blank because we really are excited about opportunities to bring staff and students to help us design and develop these spaces, whether it's with graphics that are either developed by the school, whether it's environmental graphics or even just we'll we'll have areas of the school that students can display all of their work. Here's a view with the main entrance behind us. Again, now we're walking down the corridor, so we kind of rotated you around a little bit. The career center is on your right. This is a stair that takes you from the first floor to the second floor. And what you're looking at is the end of the corridor, which faces Stockbridge Road. And it's open and bright and light and down below is the cafeteria. We're walking a little bit further on the left is the auditorium. We're walking towards the cafeteria stairs. And then this is a view from the second floor, looking down onto the main lobby area. We have intentionally placed lockers, single loaded on all of the corridors so that it really doesn't feel like you're walking down a double loaded corridor that we're trying to bring in as much natural light as possible to make this feel as open throughout the school. Here's some views of your beautiful new auditorium. And we do have a balcony that that we will provide for additional seating. There'll be four hundred and fifty seats for the new auditorium. Here's a view looking from the stage out to the audience. Over in the right is where that orchestra pit will be. And that will also be available for additional seating if you don't need the orchestra pit. And then you'll see that you have the control booth in the back. This is the view of the cafeteria and you'll see it is located in the lower level, but there's this great connection to the first floor, the main floor. And then there'll be doors that will take you directly outside. The glass doors that you're seeing in the back here, those will open up and that will become your kitchen. So when it's in use, you get to take advantage of the entire quarter and circulation. And then when you want to close the cat, the kitchen area, it's done in a way that is very nice and elegant. Here's a view of the library, intentionally designed to really support all the fabulous activities that occur, right? The library is just not for reading books and studying anymore. There's games, there's all kinds of things that Cara does, and we really want to maintain that spirit with the new school. Here would be your new automotive shop. And you can see we'll have garage doors that will open up directly to the outside. We'll have four bays for cars. We even have an EV charging area, charging station for electric vehicles. And behind it is going to be a shared instructional room that will be shared for both the automotive as well as the electricity program. Here's a view of the science classrooms or two views of the science classrooms. It was really requested by staff to have this great large white marker board wall, a whole wall, because they really do engage and get up there and really solve problems. So this is a great opportunity to engage the staff and students together. You'll see that these tables are flexible. You can put them up against the perimeter for lab functions or you can bring them into the middle of the room for instructional purposes. And here's a general classroom. Again, flexible in nature. We're trying to have the all the appropriate technology built into each of the classrooms. We have lots of beautiful natural light coming in as well as some storage units and shelving for flexible use for staff. So we're really excited to let you know that we have worked really hard and focusing on cost. And yes, thi- this is going to be an amazing school. It will be durable, but our focus has been on making this as cost effective as possible. And we have not left any stone unturned. When we finished up the feasibility study back in December, we had two we had two cost estimates. CMR is construction manager risk, as well as design bid build, which is just hiring or or selecting the lowest bid general contractor contractor for the project. As soon as we submitted the feasibility study to MSBA, the building committee decided that, given this is a new school and the team that is assembled to help you with this through Dinesco and Skanska, that a general contractor is totally appropriate for designing this school. So that actually reduced the cost by ten million dollars right there. So if we just focus on this one column with the total construction cost of one hundred and twenty seven million and we had some soft costs, the total project cost was one hundred and fifty four million dollars. We were able to confirm ground source heat pumps or the geothermal wells were possible and plausible. And so the ground source heat pumps were confirmed back in January. And and you'll see that the total cost for construction and soft costs haven't changed. What we did find out was that MSBA had made an error in your reimbursement rate. And so when they corrected that, you'll see that you ended up with a significant additional reimbursement from the MSBA of about six million dollars. Mass Save incentives have been there throughout the duration. You have a contract or a memorandum of understanding with Mass Save. So we are anticipating an additional one point five million dollars savings from them. So when you look at the bottom line, the total project cost or local share went from ninety nine million to ninety three million, just with the correction from MSBA, which is great news. We have spent, again, the past six months really honing in on what the appropriate finishes are, making sure that everything that we're doing has an eye towards cost. And you'll see that the building committee has gone through a series of tests, trying to understand everything, even from mechanical systems. So the building committee again approved the ground source heat pump system with a fan coil unit system to provide the heating and cooling within the school. We had a series of kind of discussions with the building committee, with the district and amongst ourselves. And the cost estimates that we just received were approximately over two, two point five, two point four million dollars less than we were in January. So we're really excited about that. The soft costs are pretty much the same as they were back in January. And now your total project cost went from one hundred and fifty four point four to one hundred and fifty two point five million. So a two million dollar reduction there. Ironically, the the square footage of the building increased slightly to accommodate some fi- as we finalize some of the programs that we were, we we need a little more space. But that actually in the end ended up helping us with the reimbursement from MSBA. So your reimbursement from MSBA went from fifty nine point three to sixty one point one million dollars. Your Mass Save incentive still remains at about one point five million. And we just received the energy model report back. And we're very excited to say that we are at the energy use index of twenty five, which is the number we need to be to be able to receive this generous rebate from Mass Save. So in the end, you know, your local share has gone from ninety nine point four to ninety three point five to eighty nine point eight million dollars. So we still have a grant that we're hoping to hear from. It's the Mass Commu- Clean Energy Center grant. That that could also be an extra five million dollars. It's to support communities such as yours utilizing sustainable features such as ground source heat pumps. So we're still excited about that. And we will know by the end of June, it might not be before we submit this to MSBA, but hopefully we'll we'll have positive news on that. And we are still leaving the possible opportunity to receive money back from the government through the Inflation Reduction Act incentive. It's still on the table. It's still part of the bill that's trying to be passed through Congress. We just still don't want to count on it because you can't, it's not a contract that you have. It's just something that you would submit at the end of the project, but there's always this possibility as well. What was that?
So the only thing in America that's gotten cheaper over the past year is this building.
I right. It's 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 great. I I will say we worked really, really hard at this. But I don't think that we can take full credit. We're seeing the market start to soften a little bit as well. So that's great news for this project for you all. And maybe maybe things are starting to shift and and kind of the construction industry is shifting a little bit. Where I think at about about eight hundred and fifty, a little bit over eight hundred and fifty a square foot, where at one point we were thinking we were going to be nine hundred and fifty a square foot. So it's significant reduction. Yeah. I just real quick shout out the community meeting and tour on Monday. As Peter mentioned, we'll be meeting with the building committee on Wednesday to review all of the costs. And we actually have what we call a value management log that has some items that if if you're interested to take that sometimes really impacts the durability, operations, maintenance and then aesthetics. But right now we're in such a great place that it it really just becomes a decision of it, does it make sense now or we'll keep this log as we move into the next phases of the project? And then the building committee meeting on June twenty fourth. Just I I did notice on the agenda for tonight, it said that it is virtual and and in person, I just want to make clear that that is just going to be a quick fifteen minute virtual meeting only. And just just so everyone knows, just for the building committee to vote to allow the team to submit this schematic design to MSBA. And then we will see you hopefully throughout the summer. But officially, we'll welcome everyone back September sixteenth to kick off the fall with another community meeting and tour on September sixteenth. So that is it. Here to answer any questions?
Thank you, Donna. It was really thorough. Anybody have any questions?
What about solar panels? Would I assume they were considered but not?
Yes, so the building and I'll talk to it and Donna can talk to it. The building will be solar ready, so we could put panels on either the building or in the parking lot. But it's not part of this plan right now. The district is also party to, Steve, what do we call that? Like our purchasing agreement? So so we're getting many of the benefits of solar power already by a cost reduction in our electric rates.
And where we, yeah, we've had conversations with them. And I think they're a little slow to respond, but we don't believe that the existing contract that you have in place, this power purchase agreement will preclude you from adding to adding solar to to the roof or or the parking lot. So the building will be what we like to call plug and play. So all the infrastructure will be on available and you can just come manual. The the roof has been is designed to support the solar, the ballast, everything that you need for it. And that will have panels and everything in the electric room to support the panel, the solar that would come afterward.
What about LEED recognition? Is it, are we seeking LEED certificates?
Donna can talk to that. We are and she can tell you the different levels and and what we're doing.
It's so funny. I actually want it, I was thinking about putting all of the sustainable elements into this presentation, but I was trying to keep it short, just given your your lengthy agenda. Yes, it is. You you are already registered with LEED. It is actually a requirement with MSBA that you have to at minimum achieve LEED Silver status. We are right now trending to achieve LEED Gold, which is, which is awesome.
That's one little below plan?
Yeah, which is great.
That's great.
Yeah, it's great.
Sarah's got a question.
Just a quick question. Can you just remind us, Donna? What is the cost to the community in the kind of do nothing scenario? Again, like just repairs compared to? what is the cost to the community in the kind of do nothing scenario again, like just repairs compared to?
Bring it up to code.
Right, just, just to bring it up to code with no educational, um, benefits whatsoever. You're putting me on the spot, Sarah. Uh, I, I believe it's somewhere around ninety million dollars. I, I will have get that exact number. I think it was eighty-nine to ninety million dollars of which you get no reimbursement, no nothing from the state. Um, the other challenge with that is the amount of work that's required is so significant that we'd ha- you'd have to figure out how you could actually phase the work, right? We used to say there are summer slammers. You come in, get a whole bunch of work done in the summer while students are gone. But to replace the whole mechanical system or all the windows in the building itself, just those two items alone, um, would, would be an extreme challenge. There's no way you could do it over a summer. So we would have to kind of strategically think how you would actually have to do the work in a phased manner or find some portable classrooms or some, or something, right? Um, and also, yeah.
And I think she knew the answer. We've now, we've now reached the tipping point where the new building, if it passes, will be cheaper than renovations and, and better for the students and the community.
And, and none of the phasing silliness, right? Then you drag it out over.
And no portable classrooms.
No portable.
No, no portable classrooms, appropriate spaces, um, you know. You, you, i- if you did nothing, you wouldn't even get the electricity program, right? You wouldn't even be able to have your fourth, chapter seventy-four program.
Other questions? Donald, let me just say that's a wonderful presentation.
Excellent.
Yeah, really good.
We're really, really, really excited. So hope to see some of you. We'll see some of you on Wednesday night. But feel free to come, keep us company on Monday night as well. So have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Amazing thing about, yeah, amazing thing about the team that was hired is that, I don't know, Jason and Peter and Steve and whoever, Sarah and Diane, even though you were at the meeting, when you see this again, it's still really exciting sharing. Yeah, it's, it's.
Better matter for ninety-six.
Yeah, it really is. It's not just like, ah, I saw this the other night.
Very true.
And they keep adding more slides. I, I want to see the auto shop. I want to see the science lab, right?
Based on Diane, we got the view from the, uh,
The stage.
From the stage.
Yes.
And, and the view from the mountain, right?
Yeah, that's good too.
Just don't make it V R, please, because that makes me sick. To have that, yeah.
Uh, good. So that's, uh, and then belonging and safety. We talked some, uh, about the Weldon Johnson thing. Uh, we're continuing, uh, to do our best to, uh, hold students and families, uh, in safe and supportive ways. As, as all sorts of things happen around us in the community, uh, and it's a really challenging time for, uh, uh, for young people and families right now. Subcommittee, and, and I must say that subcommittees this time of year don't always meet. And with some of us on the building committee, it's even harder because they do start with their calendar. The building committee is leading aggressively. They'll slow down a little bit over the summer. And hopefully in the fall it'll pick up. And then after the positive vote, I hope it'll really, I hope. So policy is not met, buildings and grounds.
It's not met yet.
Superintendent's evaluation.
Next week.
There, that's it. Finale.
Have not met.
And negotiations, that'll have to start in fall or.
Pretty change of areas.
Yeah, at post vote. Yeah, and it's going to have to. I mean, if a contract's up.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Uh, the cooperative group in Unit C. Those two.
Does it go through or the, the teachers aren't?
Teachers are not allowed.
Yeah, good. Yeah, but hopefully it'll go through. Peter, anything on the personnel report you want to point out?
Uh, but a couple of new hires that we're excited about and, uh, uh, we, we mentioned Sharon's, uh, retirement, um, and then, um, uh, a few people resigning and stepping away, appreciate their, uh, their service to the district. And, and just because it's fun, Jack, as I said, has been a long term stuff for such studies at, at the high school. So the more things change, the more they stay this.
Yes. Um, any new or old business before the committee? Any public comment? Let me just keep, and I, I can't, I'm feeling the same. Not a lot of public comment. By unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.